Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me say, um, excuses for being a little bit late starting this meeting. I apologize. Our, our work session, executive session went over, pushed us back, but we're certainly happy that you're here with us and we want to be respectful of your time. As I call this meeting to order, at this time, we're going to start our meeting with the invocation and I'm going to ask the chief to come up and lead us in our pledge. Father, we are thankful for this day and this time that we come together to take care of the business of our city. We pray that everything that would be said and done here would be pleasing in your eyes. We ask for wisdom and we ask for courtesy among all of our hearts, Lord, as we give comments, as we debate issues, that we remember that the example is leaders that we set are being watched by others. Please ask your blessings upon our city and those who protect it. In your name we ask it. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir. Counsel.
Good evening, Chief.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We'd like to start our meetings by going over our guidelines as we do for all of our meetings. City meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will certainly recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. And each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to that speaker. And with that, I'll recognize Mayor Poe Tim Price for additions or deletions to the agenda. Good evening, Mayor Poe Tim.
Good afternoon. Well, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. On September 14th agenda, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda. With that, I would entertain a motion, if you, if I'm in order to do that, to approve the agenda as presented to City Council.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Broll, all those in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. The minutes were distributed to council members for their review before our meeting. I'd entertain a motion at this time to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Walts. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. We move down to old business. Item number one is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. And with that, I'll recognize our city manager, Mr. Beedenbo. Mr. Beedenbo?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. And we have four appointments for consideration. We have Anna to the Senior Commission for a term that would, uh, reappointment for a term through March 14th, 2022, and three appointments for the Municipal Development Commission, Philip Mary, David Jamison, Douglas Slaughter. And those are before council this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beedenbo. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Is there a second?
Seventh.
Okay. And I'm sorry with the mask. That was, Councilwoman Price?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, it's fine. It's fine. All, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Are there any other appointments to be considered at our next meeting? This is the time when council members have the opportunity to put those names forward. Yes, Councilwoman Broll?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would like to appoint Angela Fleming to the Community Development Committee. She will be replacing Mrs. Ann Dix, who called me and let me know that after serving seven years on the Community Development Committee, she would like to take a little time off. And I thanked her very much for her service. And then also, excuse me, I'd like to reappoint Richard Funkhauser to the General Aviation Commission.
Good, very good. Thank you. Any other considerations for our next meeting? All right. Thank you for that. Moving down old business to item number two, this is a motion to take a resolution authorizing the provision of water and sanitary sewer utility services to property located on University Lane off the table. So at this time, is there a motion to take the resolution authorizing this off the table?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jerdo. Is there a second?
Second.
We both did.
Okay. Councilwoman Gregory? Thank you for the second. Uh, I'm looking here as we move it off and I'm going to look at council. Is this a, is this for discussion to take it off the table or is it just a vote, straight vote, isn't it? Okay. All those in favor of, of the motion to take this resolution off the table authorizing the provision of water to and sanitary sewer utility services to property located on University Lane, please raise your hand. Okay. And that's unanimous to take it off the table. Moving down to item number three, and it'll sound very familiar. This is an approval of a resolution to provide water and sewer services to property located on University Lane off, off of University Parkway. By title, a resolution authorizing the provision of water and sanitary sewer utility services to property located on University Park Lane. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Right. Councilwoman Gregory?
Second.
Councilman Jerdo? Very good comments from staff.
Thank you. And as a point of clarification for every, for council and, and the audience, the item was tabled, not continued last time, which is parliamentary difference, so we had to go through this particular, removing it from the table for the, since, per our rules. What we have is an item that was first in front of council at the July 14th meeting, excuse me, at the August, at the first meeting we had in August. And this is to provide water and sewer services to property located on University Lane. At the meeting in August, there was a lot of discussion from residents and others pro and, in favor and opposed to this item. And it was revolving around the covenants and so forth, which is technically, I guess, not something that, for the city to, to opine or, or to, or to get too far down the road in, in terms of reviewing. It's just considering water and sewer services. However, we did receive a copy, we, we got them from the Register of Deeds Office, the original covenants from around 1973. And based on that and the review of the ownership of lots, of all the lots, whether improved or not in the subdivision, we felt like we were satisfied to, to bring this back from a staff perspective for council consideration. And we also shared with council, we reviewed the line that had collapsed. It was a storm sewer line that, that was not a city storm sewer line. And we shared with council, I guess, the, the sizes of the infrastructure pipes via email soon after. We had this before council in August. So we have this item in front of you to provide water and sewer services to this property for the construction of these 12 townhomes. And that is before council this evening as a resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beedenbo. Are there any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Good evening again.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm William Brantley again from Columbia, but my parents are both from the Aiken area originally. I live 2202 Gadsden Street, Columbia. I, as my, you've got a couple of letters from me by now, but I'll just summarize a little bit and a little aside, too, that's not in my letters. The sewer line that is on the backside of one of the parcels that's being considered here, next door to my piece that I still own, I was approached by the city of Aiken back in 19, I think, 84, thereabouts, and I gave permission for y'all to run a sewer line there so you could service the hospital and Aiken better, USC Aiken it better and whatnot. And that's how I know there is a sewer line there, just because I gave y'all permission to put it there. But I'm, I'm probably own property in that neighborhood, as I said before, longer than anybody, since 1976. Maybe that's why it didn't ever do anything. I don't know. But Uncle Gene Williams and I tried to do something with it, but doggone it, he died a long time ago and, and there it went. There's only six homes there, single family homes. Two of them are not in compliance with the covenants, by the way. They're smaller. Interesting how people who live in glass houses sometime like to throw stones, but whatever, I won't go into that. But the property, I think, needs, is primed to do something, but it just ain't going to do anything the way it was originally designed. Fifty years later, here we are. So I still think this is a good idea. I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brantley.
Thank you.
I'll take your comments in a second. All right. All right. William, you want to come up or are you speaking together? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm the developer and this is the civil engineer on the project.
Okay. Just state your name for the...
I'm Dan Rickelbaum with Zell Engineers in Augusta. Chris Gray with DMC Commercial.
Dan, Chris. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to go over a few facts on the case, or the, the project. The owners previously owned another lot in there that we built townhomes on four or five years ago, maybe four years ago, I believe. We were approved to put city services in on those. We, we, at the entire expense of the owner, we put the sewer line in, bored under the road, connected it into the city sewer. We also have city water approved for those units. This is just continuation, another phase of that project. So I just wanted to simply put that, you know, we'd already done this, it was already approved, they're already built. This is just phase two and phase three of that.
Appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Okay. And we've already submitted plans to the city for review. I understand the landscape plans have already been approved. That was one of the conditions. We've already applied for the DOT permit, as well as we applied the utility plan and the full set of site plant, civil plans to the city, as well as the county. So those will all be reviewed and approved before anything's done.
Yes, sir.
So we're just here to give a brief summary and to answer any questions anybody might have.
Sure. Thank you, Father. Are there any questions from council for the developers? Ms. Price?
Yes. Um, I wrote out this weekend to see the homes you've built. Are they going to be identical to what you have already? Are you, you gonna add a little bit more flair and some different things?
They're probably similar in design. Obviously with the contours of the land, they're going to have to be a little bit different. But the ones that we built behind that unit in the back up on the hill, the six units up there, the concept of those designs are going to be identical to what we're doing down there. Some of the topography of the land is going to change some of that, so instead of having a flat all the way across, you're going to have multiple layers where they step. But for the most part, the design will be closer, similar to what we got down now.
And how many bedrooms?
Uh, right now, they're two bedroom, two baths.
Okay. No balcony?
No.
Are they fee simple? Or is it investor property or is it going to be owned by individuals?
No, these are going to be for sale for individual lots.
Okay. Very good.
All right. Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank y'all for being here tonight. Are there any other comments from the audience? Okay. Any other comments or questions from council?
Just want to say that that area has tremendous opportunities.
It does.
Why it's never been annexed, it would go, it would be a lot better in the city. The streets need a lot of work. They at least got the couch removed that was down there a couple of months ago, but from the standpoint of, they would benefit greatly by being in the city.
The area needs a lot of work.
It does. But I think the new buildings are a step in the right direction.
I want to thank staff for addressing the stormwater, um, question, the pipe that went through that constituent's yard, which was the main concern. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. So before council, is an approval of a resolution to provide water and sewer service to the property located on University Lane off of Universe, University Parkway. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item four under old business, this is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the FY 2020-21 budget by title and ordinance amending the budget of the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021. Is there a motion?
So, so moved.
Thank you. Councilman Jerdo, is there a second?
Second, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory Price. I'm sorry, I just, I can't distinguish. Councilwoman Price, thank you. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have this with, with discussion from the last meeting. We, this request, um, has several items in there, I guess, that we discussed recently at our last meeting. That includes the 4% adjustment for all first responders, which we define as sworn public safety officers, fire personnel, and dispatchers. We, just to give some history, we did have like a, we did have a comp plan review and study in about, in 2017. Council has made several modifications to public safety salaries in the last, since about 2015. And it's, becomes an issue, too, where the neighboring law enforcement agencies make modifications as well. So it, it's, that's an issue that we were always having to contend with. But we, after talking with the chief and looking, comparing ourselves to the other jurisdictions, we felt like it was an appropriate request for consideration. We also have, as part of our budget that we put together, the council passed in June, given the challenges faced by COVID-19, as well as the directive from council to, which is the directive every year to have sufficient oxygen as possible and, and try to avoid any kind of increases specifically in millage. We did not put the 1%, a 1% cost of living adjustment in for employees. And it was brought up and it is correct. That is a memorialized number, meaning that it runs with the employee, not the FTE, the employee, as long as they're with the city. If John Doe gets a 1% and then leaves in two years, then the salary figure does drop back to the beginning. So it runs as long as the employee is here. So it, in that respect, it is annualized. We estimate that that impact, again, to the general fund budget, which is about $99,550. The, we recommended putting some money into special holding for our municipal building consolidation, along with the main portion of our general fund surplus, which is the $1,295,000 we netted from the sale of the Lawrence Street building. So by doing that, that would dedicate $1,593,020 towards the project. We're recommending with some of the unspent funds out of water and sewer, we dedicate $81,495 for economic development projects for, related to infrastructure improvements and adding $260,000 to the stormwater fund. We did color code, kind of to illustrate some of the things that we're facing, the gold column or those items that were budgeted in last year's budget, but from an accounting perspective, we can't pay for anything until we receive it in the lines of equipment. So a lot of this will, was in last year's budget, but will be received after July 1st of this year. And that's listed in gold. We listed the pay adjustments, which I've touched on, in the yellow, or the lighter yellow. We also have blue items for the various committed projects, as well as purple, we listed, are those for the special holding account for our new municipal building. We also have attached behind the memorandum, the very last page of this agenda item, the fund balances as of June 30th, the snapshot at the end of the fiscal year. So this is before you tonight for consideration at second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Beedenbo. Appreciate that. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council?
I just have a question about, when we're talking about, couple of questions, we did not give cost of living last year, correct?
You're talking about the budget year that just ended?
Yes.
Yes, 1%.
And we did not?
We did. I'm sorry. We did give a 1% cost of living to employees, and I believe that went into effect July of 2019.
And the year, the year before that, what was it?
I believe that was 1% as well.
It's been 1% along.
Some, I mean, years ago, I mean, depending in the midst of the Great Recession or in other years, we, it was 1% or if you made, if you made below a certain amount and if you made above a certain amount, it was just several hundred dollars some years. Ah, thank you. But it, but it's pretty much been in the 1% range the last several years. 2017, it was one and a half. 2016, 1% and, and on back. We've got data going back to, we just went back to 1999.
That's fine. So when we were looking at like the $99,000 that was mentioned in here, that comes out of the general fund, correct?
That is correct. And that's for all general fund employees only.
And then the others that are shown in here come from various other sources and funds. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, the other...
At first, I wasn't sure. I was trying, I was, I was looking in the wrong place.
Sure. Some come from water and sewer. Basically, we have four funds that we pay employees' salaries out of. That is the general fund, which is the majority of employees. Then our number, almost all of our engineering and utilities employees are paid out of the water and sewer fund, which is an enterprise fund driven by those revenues. We have just a couple of employees in stormwater and that is the $7.90 residential homeowners' pay comes out of, those employees comes out of that. And then solid waste, which is a portion of the public services department, a majority actually, are paid out of those fees for the solid waste fee.
Okay. I was trying to determine, make sure I understood where, where that was coming from. So these start, these will be for nine months. The numbers that we're looking at is for nine months rather than a full 12-year.
That is correct. That's what we would recommend, or that's what we're recommending for council's consideration.
Okay.
Now, you have a total for the 1%. What is the total for the 4%? Do you know what that equates to a full year?
It would get, no, it's only three quarters of the year, October 1st through June 30th of '21.
All right. Well, what it would equate for the 1%, because I can do the math fairly easily, is about $130,000. So what, what we're doing is we're committing to pay $130,000, well, $99,500 for the next nine months and then $130,000 the next year and the next year and the next year, ex potential. I, I see this as two different things. The public safety department, if we're short on the amount of money that we're supposed to be paying in comparison to what the other county, North Augusta, whatever they're called out, it's Savannah Riverside now, they're not Wackenhut, they're something else, Centerra, that, then, fine, we need to correct that, but we're committing to over $200,000 a year, every year from, and correct me if I'm wrong, $507,000 basically is because of unfunded positions that were not filled, correct?
That is a substantial portion of that amount. That is correct.
It's a snapshot of one year and one year in the budget. So it's 507,000. So what we're doing is spending roughly $300,000, which we're committing not just for this year, but in the future as well, correct?
Yes, that, you're talking, the $300,000 includes the 4% adjustment of public safety.
Right.
Yes, that is correct.
So again, my concern the last time was, we're in an unknown situation in terms of our income going forward. We don't know what the effect's going to be. I, I'm fine with the police, the, the public safety and that adjustment and, and bringing them to a level, but I think it is prudent in terms of the 1% that we take that, that money and put it in the general fund to decide we can adjust when we have a full year's budget going forward. At least that's my opinion.
Does, does that money, that 178 include benefits?
It is just a pay adjustment.
So you gotta add benefits on top of it?
Um, no, because health insurance is a fixed...
Okay.
Health insurance is a fixed cost.
Retirement?
The retirement match.
Daniel, do we have any batteries for...
There'd be some amount for Biden.
So would we add another 10, 20%?
Five is about 6.7. 7.65.
So how much more do we need to add to it?
Health insurance is already a fixed cost.
That's correct.
Um, I would say 20%, if we added pension, but that's a figure that's compounded over years.
Yes.
You're saying the number's 20%?
I would say 20% if you wanted to add it to this figure. But it's not going to be that.
So the 300 now becomes 360.
You want to say something?
We're not gonna, um, that's not how we do our pension. That's not how we budget for our pension.
All right. Like, I get, the heartburn I'm having with this whole thing is, we keep having to adjust public safety's pay. And I'm not saying they're not worth it, but I'm just giving a percentage number. I know it was done three, four years ago. Well, obviously, there's a fall somewhere for having to keep adjusting. And maybe it's time we step back and take a look and see exactly what we need to do so we don't have... time we step back and take a look and see exactly what we need to do so we don't have to keep facing this problem. It seems like we do this all the time. Why don't we fix it rather than keep chasing it? Because you're just throwing a number out of four percent. It might be six percent that needs to be. It might be three. I don't know. But it's just a percentage number. I'm assuming that percentage number is based on the money we have, not necessarily how it's reflective in their their pay. And I like to know what what the real number is to get this thing worked out so we don't have to keep adjusting. And at that point, then we have a real number.
That is a very good PowerPoint exercise, dear, but it would also involve the other law enforcement agencies sort of colluding or collaborating. I think your point's well taken as a chalkboard exercise, but that is something that we're constantly having to address. I've seen other agencies having to fight the same thing for other positions, whether it's EMTs or other types of law enforcement, but, I mean, that's that's a fair statement you're making.
I mean, I don't know what what our public safety people make, so I don't know what I'm, you know, who's getting what and how it works out. There's just four percent. Let's just pick a number.
Well, you know, it says in our, it says in our notes, our, not what we're looking at right now, but back from our work session last time, entry level positions, the starting salary currently is forty-one thousand, two sixty-seven. And I don't know if it's in this one, but in one of the others, it talked about, here Sheriff's Department ranges thirty-eight to forty-one, but they only do law enforcement. Remember, ours are double, are double trained, and within three years, a North Augusta officer will be at a midpoint of fifty-five thousand.
But that's, I mean, that's starting officers. What about ones that've been there ten years?
It says, it says at three years, in three years.
It's something we need to look at.
If, and Aiken would be at about fifty thousand. See, what, I think when Chief came up before I asked him this, is, I think, and please, Chief, correct me, we're training groups, and I think we just finished with a group right now, and we put all this into them, and they're greatly trained because they're being trained both in public safety and in fire, and then right away, they go to another, and you can't blame them if you're going to be paid seven, eight thousand dollars more. And when you're a young lady or man and you have a family with children, that seven or eight thousand dollars makes a big difference.
Oh, I agree.
I don't know, I don't know how we get, we're always going to be paying, like you said, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, we're always going to, they're going to keep adjusting, so we're going to have to keep adjusting. That's, that's just the name of what's going on. I don't know any other way around it. Am I wrong? Tell me if I'm wrong, please.
That's been, well, certainly, I expect that to continue that way into the future, but until, that's how it's been up to this point in a lot of cases, is the, we kind of get ahead, then another agency will get ahead and so forth. So, unless we had some sort of, you know, as I say, bargaining, whether it's you, I mean, the fact we're right to work kind of puts us in this situation to some extent, I would imagine.
I mean, I would think we could hire a consultant to come in here, different than the one we hired before, so we get a different opinion, and say, this is what everybody's making, and this is where you need to be, and these people need to be here, these people need to be here. I'm not arguing they don't need a raise. I just don't know what that number is. I don't know if this is right or wrong.
Mayor, may I?
And across the board, it may be too low for starting officers and too high for others. I don't know.
Councilwoman Gregory?
I think, and I'm glad this came up, I actually was having a conversation to the SOAR earlier today with staff, and there's, there's three things we need to look at that really, and I see exactly what Councilwoman Wiltz is saying, but there's three things, to go back to Councilwoman Broll's point, our officers are dual-certified, and they are getting paid similar amounts of money than our surrounding cities, but they're doing two jobs. While we're paying, some of these surrounding cities pay their officers a little bit more, but they're only responsible for law enforcement. So, we have to make sure we consider that, and that brings up a very valid point. The second point I want to mention, which is what you were talking about, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, is our officers don't make as much money in the beginning, but as they build tenure, they level out or make, get more significant pay increases. Is that correct, Chief?
So, yes, there's a continual progression. However, other agencies get there faster, and so you have trouble making up that money.
Correct.
And so, I think that was some of the discussions that was had earlier, and, so I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. And so, those were my, my first two points, and my final point, which was, is something that has really had, have, has had me thinking, is we really, as a council, in my opinion, need to revisit ADPS. We need to revisit Aiken Department of Public Safety, and I feel that as we prepare for the next budget season, to your point, we need to really look at their budget. I don't think the adjustments are going to change because things happen all the time, but we can limit that if we fully, and we fully fund ADPS, but I really think that we are really short on so many aspects. I really personally don't think we have enough officers on the force because there's so much turnover. And, you know, when, when you have, not that there's a lot of turnover, but when, when we lose people, they seem to be kind of like in groups, and, and that, that costs a lot of money. It really puts, takes people off the streets. We're, we're looking at a dual certification approach, so we really need to focus on how do we fill those gaps with bodies, and, and, and that takes money. So, we have to make sure we really revisit this budget, and I know I've said this to you, Chief, and you are so modest, and stewardess too, but I want to see the numbers. Like, you, we need to be hefty, especially in this climate, in this day and age. We have got to really become hefty in ADPS. And, and I always ask myself this question, is being certified the right approach? I don't know. I mean, it may be. It sounds great. It sounds very admirable. It makes, I mean, it, it's a great presentation for the city of Aiken, but is it really, I mean, is it maybe something we need to consider where they're separately paid, as separate person? I don't know. I'm not asking you that question, but we need to look at all those things because that's one of the, I know that we're losing officers for that reason. It's a lot on their plate for the same amount of money. So, we need to really, really peel back the layers and give you exactly what you need, Chief, and we need to look at that in the future. So, I just, that's all I have to say, but I just think we really need to hone in on that.
All right. Any other comments?
Well, again, I'm fine with the public safety and that part of it. Again, I don't think we need to commit ourselves to the ninety-nine-five for the next nine months out of this pool of five-hundred and seven thousand. It commits us to another one-hundred and thirty thousand dollars the next year, and the year after, and the year after. I really feel like what you're saying is exactly right. We need to look at it at the time when we do the budget for public safety and for the staff in general, not be giving it at this time when we have some extra money, oh, now we're going to add it, and it's going to continue on to the future. I just think it's, this isn't the time to be doing an additional pay raise for everybody across the board, especially in the current climate.
I think, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Broll?
I think I'm hearing. Maybe I'm not. We all want to make sure public safety gets taken care of. We don't want to lose any more officers. And then when you look at, how can we say this without it sounding like we, we don't want to, if the things weren't like they were today, I, I think one percent is too little to give our employees. They have done such a great job. But, right now, we aren't sure what's down the road, and I don't want to give them a job or give them this one percent, which is a very small cost of living, and down the road maybe think we're going to have to lay some people off. Which is the better? Is it better to have the job?
Or the one percent?
Or the, or the one, you know, I'm just trying to be, I don't, I don't want to lose any of these people out of positions. I don't know, maybe we won't. Maybe there won't be any problem whatsoever. Or do we give them a bonus now and say, gee, I wish if things turn out to turn around, which I believe they will at some point, that we can revisit it and distribute more? Maybe I'm totally talking out of my hat. I'm just, is that anything like what you're thinking about?
Yeah, well, I think that that's exactly what I'm thinking about in terms of the process for the whole thing. It's not that one percent is not that much money to one person, and understand that. But again, within the framework, we're, we're committing basically, if we do this for public safety, which I agree we should do, that's two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars every year that we're committing to in the future out of this five-hundred and seven. That's half of it, or basically half of it, almost half. I don't think we need to commit another hundred and thirty thousand dollars for everybody across the board in this particular scenario. Now, first of the year, or when the fiscal year ends, which is in July or June or whatever we do, we, if there's a raise, we do it within that budget. That's the time to do that particular raise, not now, within, especially in the framework of what's going on in the public and the economy and, again, I, maybe I'm worried about it, and hopefully, everything will turn out just hunky-dory and rosy, and we'll make as much money as we ever have, but that may not be the case. So, I'm just saying, use some sensibility and future of saying, let's hold it in, on the one percent, and go ahead and raise the, the public safety to four percent.
I think we're all a little apprehensive, but at the same time, I certainly do not want any of the employees to think that we do not think they are valuable and have done a great job. It's that conundrum. It's like.
Yes, that's the tough part.
So, give us some money, you know what I'm saying? But at the same time, I can see a scenario down the road where, okay, well, now we don't need as many people, so we're going to have to lay you off. Well, they'd have been much, they'd have been much happier to keep their salary without the one percent raise. You know, it's, it's a sad, I don't know.
It's just like during the, the three-month shutdown. All those people got, they kept their jobs and they were paid through the whole thing. I mean, public safety worked through the whole thing, solid waste did a great job and worked through that, sewer did too. Not saying they don't deserve it, but again, I'm sure everybody appreciates, they didn't get laid off, they didn't have to worry about PPP and all that type of thing. City kept paying them. Everything turned out great. This is a year where we should probably be a little conservative on that, and that's my two cents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, I have a couple of questions to ask, if you don't mind. Thank you. What is your average turnover rate?
Well, the rate is, is, we have, currently have five openings right now as public safety officers, but I have a lot of folks in training right now due to COVID.
Fifteen.
Backlog, you know, the academies, we ended up doing our own in-house fire academy, so we didn't have to send them to the state level, which we think saved a little bit of money, but it also, I mean, it drained some resources too. So, very excited about that. I currently have three fixing to go to the back, or going to the criminal justice academy, and we just graduated five from the criminal. So, we're making progress. And if, if COVID hadn't hit, I don't, I don't know that we would have felt this strain is, as, as strong. However, that's, that's where we currently stand.
Well, a couple of years back, we were, you were short of staff.
Yeah.
We said to you, put ample people within the pipeline.
That's right.
So, you would not run short of officers. And correct me if I'm wrong, quite a number of our officers leave to go to Savannah Riverside. They can make up to thirty dollars an hour out there.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we would be naive if we think that they're not chasing the pay increase when you can make that kind of money per hour. The dual responsibility does not give me heartburn recognizing that they have to maintain their certification in the fire area, but I don't think that they're overly taxed in that area in terms of responses to fires in this town. Am I correct, or?
Well, I mean, we, when we do our workload assessment, we factor the fire component in with the law enforcement, but that doesn't do away with any of the training or certification that they have to do to, to be able to maintain.
They have to maintain that certification. That is key.
I think your statement is fair. Our fires are slightly down over several years. When I first got hired at public safety, we had a lot more structure fires. There's no doubt. But with code and different improvements, I think we are seeing some reduction in that area.
The other strength that we have with our officers is the relationship building with our citizens, which is extremely key to the operations of any city. If you don't have a relationship with your citizens, then you're going to run into trouble at some point in time. And you have been proactive as the chief in terms of helping to establish that rapport to all of our citizens. So, kudos to them. Having said that, it is just not riding in that car and giving tickets and chasing folks, but it's also that extra, and that is the relationship building. So, chasing the, with the pay scale, given what we experienced this weekend with the gunfire taking place, it does not overly concern me in term, and it should because it's our budget, but I think we need to pay our officers a decent wage in addition to, and I'm going to call it a cushion, because it is a job where you don't know whether you're going to return home in the evening. Your, your, your life is, is not yours when you are working in that job, I get a call, whether it's, it's police or fire. So, based on the jeopardy that we place, those folks are in jeopardy, our officers are in jeopardy on a daily basis, I don't linger with that probably in, with agony as others, because I have, we've been back and forth with that, this discussion for many, many years since I've sat in this seat, so.
But with the, with the, to your point, Ms. Price, that our community services division, which, which, those, that's where the vacancies are. We've put our community services division, or most of them, on the road, so they're answering those calls for service. And so, being able to build that back, to be able to continue those relationships are a priority for us. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chief, I don't, I don't think anyone up here wants to.
No.
We want you and your staff to have what you need, and we're going to see to that.
And I think this is a good time to take the money and do that, plus you, like, you just brought a good point. You're going to try to hire those five positions, are you not?
We, we did PT testing today.
Yeah, and that's good. I mean, that's going to be another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, at least in terms of the scope. I don't know, it may be more than that, but that's the point. That's coming in the budget. Need to look to the future.
That's already budgeted, Mr. Gerda.
But we ended up with five-hundred thousand dollars short because of things like that. It's why we have five-hundred thousand dollars now. So, we're spending the five-hundred thousand dollars to enhance, make things maybe possibly easier for you in terms of this, this number, but that, that's not in question. What I'd like to do is, is make a motion that we strike the one percent raise and approve all the rest of it.
Okay, we have a motion to amend what's in front of us as far, as far as the ordinance amending the budget of the city of Aiken, so we're going to amend this amendment that would take out the one percent to employees.
To all employees?
To, to.
At this time?
That's what I understand. Leaving in the four percent and all the items that are being carried forward.
Correct.
Two, three, four.
Can we?
So, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll do it second.
So, we have a. So we have a second, and it is debatable, so.
But I would want to see us hold that $100,000 till the end of the year, so if we can use it for employees for a bonus or something at the end, we have the money.
There.
Exactly.
It would stay in the general fund.
Correct.
So they can have that at the end of the year.
Unbalanced and all the other, so this is a motion for across all funds, not just for the general fund. I know you were mentioning $100,000.
It would, you would amend that to include, for example, the enterprise funds that those positions are paid for.
Of the other areas that's being pulled from, because you said they came from different pots.
That's correct. About $35,000 came from enterprise funds, three enterprise.
We want our employees to get something. We're just saying, maybe not right this moment, but let's hold it, and so when things, let's give Public Safety what they need. You see what I'm saying?
Ideally, ADPS and the rest of staff should be separate. We really should be, in my opinion, I really wish we could have visited this separately, because yes, everybody's a staff of the City of Aiken, but the scope of jobs is significantly different. And so, I mean, obviously, it's too late for that, but I think in the future, we need to make sure that we revisit it like that, because the scopes are significantly different. It's not apples to apples.
Right.
I agree with that.
And staff, all the other staff, we want them to know that they're appreciated, and your way is a way, that's what I was thinking, can we do a bonus? Can we hold something back? We're not saying we just don't want to do it, we just want to be prudent right now. And if, hey, maybe we're in a better place, and we can give them more than what.
That's what I hope.
Yeah.
We've had conversations about salary studies and in the future, so we can better, and I can tell you, as a part of any salary study we go through, the cost of living is going to be a part of that study.
Right.
Because if you don't, and this is 1%, which is the least we can do, the least we can do.
Exactly.
But if you don't do that, it falls out of the range and out of the band of which those positions are ranked, so you end up having to come in and say, we don't have, we're not keeping up with it.
Right.
So then, five years, we find ourselves.
Losing people.
Way behind, not just in public safety, but in every other position as well. So, I mean, I.
Well, you make up for it, and when you're in solid ground and you realize, we got a vaccine and we don't have to wear a mask anymore, or whatever the case may be, but there's still a cloudy future. Let's just be wise about the whole thing.
All right, so we have a motion to remove the 1% from all the different funds for general employees. 4% stays in, and that money will be preserved in the general fund for review at our next budget session.
Just the 1%? I think.
Just 1%. That's exactly right. As I stated, 1% only. So all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please raise your.
Clarity, please.
Yes.
The 1% that we're discussing only relates to our public safety officers.
No.
Across the board.
Across the board.
And you're saying that we'll hold that amount of money abey until we decide if it's critically needed at the very end of the budget year?
Right.
That's what's being said, yes.
If I'm not mistaken, we budgeted a small bonus at the end of the year, correct?
You're talking about at Christmas?
Yeah.
That is correct. It's.
Holiday bonus.
A holiday, but it's $25.
So we add it on calendar year?
Yeah.
Right, we could actually increase that, and it's a fixed number. We're not committed to next year of anything. And then the budget, we look at the raise, maybe 2%. I'm fine with that, if that's what it takes to catch up, just to yours. And the economy's good, and life has grown again.
Well, you could amend it, I mean, we already have a motion on the floor, no, but you could amend it to do a one-time bonus of this amount even.
That's something I.
But everything we're talking about is hypothetical, it's in the future, it's next year, it's, I mean, people, they want their money. I mean, they deserve their money. It's 1%. I agree with what Rick, Mayor Osman, said. Pay grades are pay grades, and they're set across the board. And if we start showing that deficit, we will eventually play catch-up. And I think, I personally think we need to move forward with this, and when budget season comes, we need to make sure we look at all of these aspects and really study them and proceed the way we should, whether it's ADPS or employees across the board.
So no change in the motion. It stays as is, which is to hold the 1% to a later date.
We can.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I think it's fine, and we can add the bonus in a couple of months if we want to do that, and bring it before us.
Okay. Very good. So all those in favor of the motion to set the 1% across the different funds for the employees, other than public safety, please raise your hand.
Public safety gets their 4%.
Other than public safety, the 4%, so this is just the 1%.
Public safety gets 4%.
Yes, correct, correct. So all those in favor are Councilman Walts, Councilwoman Broll, Councilman Gerdo, all those opposed, there's Councilwoman Price, Councilwoman Gregory, and the mayor. So the motion fails for a lack of majority. So we go back to the original motion, which would be unamended unless someone wants to offer up another amendment to it.
How did that went in?
I would suggest this, so that motion did not pass.
No, but I mean, the statement at the end, that we're just going to hold the money then, to a later date?
Yes. Well, so what we're voting on now is the original amendment that we were looking at. So it has the 1% in it. And if someone would like to divide the question, that might be a smart thing to do at this time, so that we vote on the two separate. That way, if individual, okay, so there's a motion to divide the question, and I'm assuming that motion is to vote on the 1% for the general employees that we just had the motion on separately than the 4%, the carryforwards that we had. So we have.
Do we have the same outcome?
It just votes separately, so that way, if it allows, it doesn't kill everything presented to us, if it doesn't have a, I think it would be the right way to handle it.
And as I said, I just really want to go on record that I think our people own that.
Before we discuss that, we have a motion on the floor to divide the question and pull that out as a separate vote. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion to divide that, we have a second. This is not a debatable motion, so all those in favor of dividing the question, please raise your hand. Okay, and so that's unanimous.
Thanks, Glenn.
So we'll have two votes on this amendment. The first will be including all the carryovers for expenses that we already had and the 4% for public safety. And then after that, we will move to a separate vote on the 1%. And upon that, that money would stay in the general fund. It'd either be distributed, or if it fails, it would stay in the general fund. So I think that's the best way, as a council, we can handle this. So before us now is the first of those two that we've separated, which is a vote on the ordinance amendment with all the expenditures and the 4% to public safety minus the 1% from the general fund for employees and each enterprise fund and other employees for 1%. So everybody clear on that? I'm sorry, I'm not trying to complicate, but everybody clear, we're voting on everything except for the 1%.
We're just, we're voting on the public safety.
Counselor, am I, okay, am I standing?
Yes.
Okay.
We're voting on public safety.
Yes, yes, we are. So all those in favor of the first portion of this ordinance, please raise your hand. Okay, and that passes unanimously. The second part that we're voting on is for the 1% for employees from general fund and other funding sources. And if it does not pass, the money will stay in the general fund and in those which could be brought up for consideration later on. So is that stated correctly, Kim?
I mean, you would have to still budget it, re-budget it.
Right, right. It would take two votes.
That would be, yeah, two separate meetings.
That's right. But the money will not be spent other places.
That is correct. We'll hold it in abeyance.
Okay, very good.
We need to set a time at which we are going to decide that.
We don't have to do that right now, but, yeah, I mean, it's certainly. So, okay, so the vote before us is for the 1% for across the board for employees.
And that set of that amount is what?
It's about 99,000.
That's out of the general fund.
General fund. It's a total of about $130,000, 133,000, 134,000.
Okay, very good. All those in favor for the second part of the question, which is the budgeting for the 1% across the board for employees, please raise your hand. And that's Councilwoman Price, Councilwoman Gregory, and the mayor. All those opposed and would support putting it in the general fund or those funds for later use, please raise your hand. And that's Councilman Walts, Councilwoman Broll, and Councilman Gerdo. The second motion fails, and the money will stay in those funds until addressed at another time. All right, thank you. We're moving down old business to item number five. This is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 of the Aiken City Code entitled Municipal Development Commission by Title and Ordinance Amending Section 11-2 of the Aiken City Code regarding the membership of the Municipal Development Commission. Is there a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The Municipal Development Commission was created a little over a year ago, and we've had discussion lately about modifying the membership, which would, initially, we contemplated putting the council, everything from adding members to putting council members in ex officio status. The council, after the meeting on August 24th, we amended the ordinance on first reading regarding the membership. The ordinance was amended for the MDC to continue to have nine voting members. None would be city council members. City manager would serve as ex officio non-voting member, and council asked that the commission recommend three persons to fill the three former council member positions on the commission. And I think those were approved earlier this evening. And this ordinance was approved at first reading, as I described, on August 24th, and it's before you for second reading this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? I'll just say, there's still one vacancy, and we will look for the committee to move a name forward and make a recommendation to us for approval. As a founding body, the state statute requires that we vote and approve the members of it, but we're asking this body to make those recommendations to us. And there's nothing in the ordinance that we have that would preclude them from creating bylaws for the organization, so it meets the needs or the requests that we've had for it. So I want to thank staff for getting that in the way they did for us. With that said, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. We're going to move down to new business at this time. New business, item number one, this is a first reading of an ordinance to renew the lease with the fixed base operator, the FBO of the Aiken Regional Airport by Title and Ordinance authorizing the modification or lease terms to Aiken Aviation Enterprises, Inc., for the premises known as the Aiken Regional Airport. Is there a motion?
Some.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Councilman Gerdo, second. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Aiken Aviation, since 1999, has served as the FBO, and we've made a number of improvements at the airport that are listed in the memo. And as we prepare to embark on the future improvements, the FBO and I have been involved in some negotiations for a new lease. Current lease is due to expire February 2024. And highlights of a potential lease expansion include, there would be, it would be a 25-year lease effective upon council approval, which would result in a new expiration date of October 2045. There'd be an increase in fuel flow revenue and rental fees for leased space. One of the things that I think will benefit us is the special events flow fee during the week, seven to nine days around the Masters Golf Tournament. And the FBO will maintain the grass cutting. And we have sent the lease ahead of time because we want the, I know the FBO's got a waiting list of folks that are interested in potentially leasing hangar space. We went ahead and had the lease reviewed before council approval. It still needs to be approved by council and can be certainly amended or not, but we sent it to the Aeronautics Commission in Columbia, as well as the FAA. They've accepted it. They haven't approved it since council has not approved it. They can't approve it formally, but they've accepted it, meaning they didn't take issue with the terms or have any concerns or questions about the makeup of the lease. So it's before you tonight for first reading.
Very good, thank you, sir. And I might ask you, if you don't mind at this time, could you introduce our city airport manager?
Absolutely. Our airport manager is a staff person, Joy Lester, and Joy has been the airport manager for.
A long time.
I believe three, two to three years, two and a half years, we'll just split it in the middle. And also, our fixed base operator for Aiken Aviation, Mike Laver, is here as well.
Good evening, sir.
Very good. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council?
I had one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I failed to ask Mr. Laver when we discussed in work session, I touched on, it was like 3% of the leases net or the 300, what has it been normally each month over the past few years? I know it fluctuates, but anywhere from what to what is the rent payment, or the lease payment, rather?
Ms. Laver will ask you to come up here if you would.
I know it can change depending on how many planes are in, you know, it's not going to be, Masters is going to be a whole different thing than a normal other time.
So, Councilwoman Broll, is your question the fluctuation of the lease on the hangars?
Right, where it says. Minimum monthly rental rate was 3% or 300 a month. As I was just asking, what is the average? I meant to ask you that when I was asking those other questions, and I failed to.
Well, for the last few years, the 3% has come into effect, so we've always exceeded the minimum.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Laver.
That answers my question.
But that's a base, that's a floor.
Yes.
And if you notice, we did put escalation clauses in there every five years.
Right.
And the same, I guess, on that note with fuel. He, once this lease is approved, the fuel flow fee will increase by one penny. It was at a nickel a gallon for 13 years, I believe, and then we raised it. Mike and I had a gentleman's agreement to raise it to seven cents starting January 1 of 19. Mike didn't have to, because he, the lease said, technically, we only need to review it every five years. And in 2010, we were in the midst of the Great Recession. We didn't want to address it. And then in 2015, there were some issues that necessitated us not addressing it, but again, Mike, it was gracious to make that offer, and certainly, we don't ever want to turn down that opportunity to have a little more money in the airport coffers for improvements.
For sure. Again, thank you. I just, I had meant to ask you that, and I did not, so that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Laver. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the first reading of this ordinance, please raise your hand. Yeah, that's unanimous. Just like to add, a thank you to Stuart and Joy, who I know worked with Mr. Laver, and I think it's certainly the best contract that, from the city's perspective, that we've seen, and hopefully a win for the FBO as well. So thank y'all for working so diligently on that. We're going to move down to petitions and requests on our agenda. Item number one is a request to renew a memorandum of understanding with Joy in Aiken. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walts. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have a proposed MOU with Joy and Aiken, first of two, and Joy and Aiken has brought us a lot of positive publicity over the last 11 years, and we must renew our MOU. It'll last for five years, include staff assistance and performers, transportation, and their instruments, and various promotional efforts. And we recommend this for council consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of this request to renew our memorandum of understanding with Joy and Aiken, please raise your hand. And of course, that's unanimous, and we want to thank you for all that Joy and Aiken brings to us. So, thank you so much for that. We're moving down to number two, and Councilman Walts will recuse himself on this vote because of immediate family members on this board. So, this is a request to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Aiken Symphony Orchestra. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Another tremendous cultural asset for us is our symphony orchestra. They have requested an MOU regarding the use of a mentum for two dates, and we have MOUs with other local cultural organizations, which this is very similar to. It's a five-year MOU. They do have a concert scheduled in November. They are, due to the COVID-19 concern, limiting seating to 84 to allow for appropriate social distancing, and we do have this in front of council for consideration this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, again noting Mr. Walts' recusal. So, that passes, and Mr. Jardo, if you'll get our
Where'd he go? When he comes back, you have to leave.
Mr. Jardo? We didn't give you too long to rest, did we?
No.
All right, we're going to move down to item number three. This is an approval of resolution to designate spending one-time County Transportation Committee, CTC, funds by Title of Resolution Authorizing the City of Aiken to recommend to the Aiken County Transportation Committee the expenditure of funds allocated for fiscal year 2020-21. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Jardo. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have this, the county delegation, legislative delegation has notified us that our County Transportation Committee has allocated so-called C funds in the amount of $292,469.08 for this year. We can use it for road projects, including but not limited to resurfacing of roads, intersection improvements, acquisition of rights of way for new road construction, and other improvements. I'm recommending, at this point, that we use this amount to help with the potential reconstruction of the Fairfield Street Bridge. As a frame of reference, last year, we used the money for acquisition of right of way, and we still have money left we can allocate for it, for the Powderhouse Connector. So, that's the recommendation this year from staff.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council?
Just for clarity, this does not in any way tie us with the presentation that was presented to us in our work session with any commitments?
I'll let Mr. Beanbo. I don't believe so, but.
Councilwoman Price, it would not.
Thank you.
All right. No further conversation. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
Thank you. Moving down to item number four, under petitions and requests, this is a request to place banners in the downtown promoting various events. I'm going to recognize staff to go over the list first, and then I'll take the motion. Mr. Beanbo?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. We do have four requests listed. The return Aiken Prayer event from September 12 through September 26, the banners to promote the Magnificent Strings Concert of the Symphony Orchestra from October 4 to October 18, the Cumbie Center placing ribbons along light poles from October 2 through 16 to bring awareness to Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and finally, the three banners from the Energy and Environmental Committee for Earth Day, which will be in March 21 through April 18, 2021.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. With that said, is there a motion from council?
Move for approval of all these event requests.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We have another banner, crop of banners.
Glad to see some eventing in the horizon. Thank you, Ms. Waters.
Thank you, guys. Very much.
Yep, thank you. Moving down to item number five. This is a resolution to purchase property located on Toolbeck Road from Dominion Energy by Title of Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Attractive Land Located on Toolbeck Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Jardo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Council's expressed a desire that we should try to grow through, and one of the means is through annexation. And recently, council authorized a provision of sewer service to a future residential development of plus or minus 60.6 acres on Toolbeck Road. It is currently not contiguous to the city. As a condition of sewer service, when council passed this service request, the property must be annexed once contiguous. I reached out to Dominion Energy to see if they would be interested in letting us purchase about a very small strip of property, about 15 hundredths of an acre, that would be contiguous to the existing city limits and run to this property that is going to get sewer. Right now, it's unimproved. Dominion has agreed to the sale for $5,000, and they did not, they were very gracious and said, you know, we, let's see what the council thinks before we do, like, the surveying and so forth, so we wouldn't incur any additional costs. But I would like this strongly approved by council because, again, this would, this is going to be developed by the same contract or same development firm that did Deodore right across the street. But again, it would not be, it would not be contiguous to us. And remember that area, we only provide sewer. We don't provide water. It's couched in Montmorency Water and Sewer District, but we will provide sewer. And again, this would give us the continuity to grow, to grow our city.
Very good. Thank you for that. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council?
I'd like to thank Stuart and his staff. This is important. It's part of the movement to grow to the east side, and this is a good thing for all of us.
Very good. All those in favor?
I have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay. Are we expecting residential development here?
Yes, it will be single-family residential, similar to what we have
Do we know approximately how many?
We do, about 100 units.
Couple hundred.
200, I'm sorry, 200 single-family units.
Significant. I'm going to approve this tonight because we're trying to grow the east, but you all know my sermon. I need not say anymore.
Okay. With that said, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving now to item number six, under petitions and requests, this is a resolution authorizing the City of Aiken to enter into an agreement with the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank for the University Parkway project by Title of Resolution Authorizing the City of Aiken to enter into an agreement with the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank. Of course, it's the same. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Walts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from staff?
Thank you. At the July meeting, the Infrastructure Bank approved our amended agreement for this University Parkway project. You might remember that this project, when approved 10 years ago, would have expanded University Parkway from Richland Avenue to Robert M. Bell. And over time, for a number of reasons, the project has not gotten off the ground, but unfortunately, the cost of the project has exceeded the amount of money from the city, the county, and the infrastructure bank. The city and the county funds come from 1% sales tax money that's already been collected and is just in account. The Infrastructure Bank did approve our scope reduction, and as part of that approval, we must execute a amended and restated intergovernmental agreement for this project. And we expect this project, we're working very well with DOT on this, and expect that this project should begin construction into March, early April, 2021.
Very good. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to items of information, anything for issues and updates?
I do. I have several items. One is a reminder that next Monday, we will have the joint, the Action Agenda Meeting between the City Council and the Planning Commission at the Price Center over on Edgefield Avenue. That will begin at 5:00. That is to encourage, we're meeting there to, there'll be approximately 18 participants. That will enable us to have social distancing. Also, I want to remind council, if you haven't and are interested, the Hitchcock Woods Foundation is available to give the tours of the Sand River area where erosion has occurred. And please let us know if you'd like to get a tour arranged. And I want to, I'm pleased to note, I found out recently, our own Jessica Campbell was elected Vice President of the South Carolina Parks and Recreation Association, which is in line to become president, and she's actually at the meeting, which is, I believe, in Greenville or Spartanburg. And along those lines, Jessica, I think, does she, we're going to, just due to the fact that Christmas will be here before we know it, we wanted to get some council feedback very briefly about potential plans for Christmas in Hoplins due to the COVID-19 pandemic, how we can take that scenario into account with planning Christmas in Hoplins. But again, we wanted to share some ideas with you very briefly and get some council feedback. Again, no decision necessarily will be made tonight if you want some additional information, but given that that will be here before we know it, we did want to brief you very, very quickly. So, Jessica, thank you for joining us remotely.
Absolutely. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Jessica. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you very much. As Stuart mentioned, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
We can hear you all right.
As Stuart mentioned, we are preparing for Christmas in Hoplins. We're looking at modifying the program this year. We do have to seek approval, of course, through the SC Department of Commerce, being that this would be an event that would have a gathering of over 250 individuals. With that, we are not going to, the proposal is to not run our shuttle service, to not offer cookies or hot chocolate, but to extend the dates of the program to run December 1 through December 27, and allow individuals to park at the gardens, as well as Green Boundary Club, to come out and enjoy the lights during those evenings.
And again, with Green Boundary Club, that is in the grass lot adjacent to the Green Boundary Club that the city purchased six or eight years ago.
Correct.
I think that's a great idea.
Sounds good.
Initially, initially, I think it's
Christmas tree this year?
You're talking about downtown? We are going to have the same tree we had last year, but we'll have the green tree in the center of Lawrence and Richland.
Correct.
I would suggest maybe sending out an email to council tomorrow with that, summing that up, and then we can give feedback.
Absolutely. We just wanted to go ahead and alert you in, to get, if there was some immediate thoughts. But we want to have a Christmas in Hoplins event, but we realize this year, given the governor's executive order parameters and other, you know, issues related to COVID-19, we need to do it a little different.
Are you guys going to limit how many people going at one time and monitor accordingly, like, people that come out versus people that go in?
Yes, there, there is a limit based on the acreage of the facility and the square footage of the pathways.
Okay.
So, we could have 4,157 attendees per night.
Correct.
Wow.
But not all at one time.
They could all be there at one time, yes.
Really? Oh.
But the likelihood of that is slim because our parking is going to help dictate that. We are at maximum 300 cars at Green Boundary and approximately 90 cars between the Rock Hatch and Hoplins side of the gardens.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Our typical night would have been 2,000 when we run up.
Excellent. Thank you, Jessica.
That's a lot.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you for taking time to report to us while you're out on, I know, in business and at the conference, so, and congratulations again on that. We're proud of you representing us.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.
Yeah, you too.
Absolutely.
Thank you for letting us share that at the end, and we'll get an email out summarizing this in writing for feedback, and that is all I have.
Very good.
Councilwoman Walts can supply some overflow parking over at your house, so that'd be nice.
Very good.
Any of you not gone to Sand River and seen the railroad tracks where it washed out? That's worth the time to go take that. That's part of that tour, which I got Randy to take me over there a couple weeks, about a month ago, and it's fascinating to see that.
Good, very good. All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walts. All those in favor, please stand up.